Hey, hey. This is your host Charlie Perry. Welcome to the Really Charlie Podcast. Today's guest is Colleen DeWicky and Ross Grace Jr., members of the New Bedford School Committee. I am very honored to have both of them here taking time away from their duties, you know, whether it's home or work, you know, other school committee to taking their time to inform the Really Charlie Podcast. Listeners that what's going on and for one, I just want to let you two know that in my whole lifetime of voting, this group of school committee members is is one of my favorites and I have so much confidence from top to bottom that this group will accomplish many, many things during your term and during the next term of the other individuals. And I cannot, I cannot wait to see how this flourishes and you know, congratulations to both of you for the title well earned.
Thank you so much Charlie. Yeah, first of all, you know, it's a pleasure to be on again Charlie. With my colleague, Colleen DeWicky, I'm excited about the opportunity to, you know, talk a little bit about why we've run for school committee and just keep people updated about some of the things that's going on. I, you know, I think it's really important to have a vehicle for the community to have the ability to learn about what we're doing. Prior to me running, I didn't know too much about what the school committee really, really did, you know? And so, you know, Charlie, you're providing a platform and the opportunity for us to kind of speak about what we're doing, why we're doing it. And hopefully maybe, maybe even inspiring other people who watch this. Maybe one day, you know, I might want to run for school committee, you know? So I just want to thank you for having me on, you know?
True, true. Yeah.
I like that. So.
Go ahead.
For having me. And I'd say what I'm really excited about, to your point Charlie, is we have a really great crew. And Ross and Melissa are adding so much already to the school committee. And then selfishly, they're giving me a lot of energy too. This is my second term and the school committee can be a bit of a slog, especially during a pandemic, as you might imagine. We're talking a lot about the things that are holding us back. And now we're moving into a new phase of opportunity and hopefully moving beyond COVID and really getting to make use of our talents on the committee and in the school district. So it's an exciting time and we really appreciate the opportunity to tell people why.
Yeah, great. We, it's funny during this pandemic, we, we all become Zoom professionals. I wonder if we can add that to our resume.
Yeah, right. And speaking, and speaking of the pandemic, we were, we were beginning March 7th on Monday, where masks are no longer a mandate. And again, that's a very, very emotional topic. We're talking about children's health here. We're talking about something that, that, you know, is very, very dangerous. And there's a lot of information, misinformation and disinformation regarding it. But ultimately, the superintendent did consult with other appropriate channels. And it's according with the state and the city that it's no longer mandated for students to have to wear masks. And why I think, why I do support that Charlie and Colleen could, you know, she could chime in, why I do support that is because, you know, it puts, it puts responsibility back in the parents, in the families. And again, it is to be taken seriously. I think there was a point where everybody, I think the mandate did make sense. You know what I'm saying? But I think as, you know, according to the information that we're getting and, you know, I think it makes sense to put the hands, the power back into the hands of the parents. So if a parent and a child decide to wear a mask because that's, that's best for them, at the same token, we do ask that parents and students be respectful of one another. You know, be courteous of one another. Because again, these are trying times and, and the schools are doing this. And I'm sure they'll be monitoring how it's working, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, we encourage the families, when you have children out there, talk with them, you know, there's not more important than, than after school, talking about their days, about their homework, about their teachers. There's nothing more important than that. And talk about COVID. Do they feel comfortable with it? You know, what are the issues concerned? You know? Everything can't just be on the schools and on the state, you know, it's, we have a role as family members, as parents, you know, to make decisions that's in the best interest of that kid. So that began Monday, March 7. And again, Colleen and I are both available for any questions or concerns, any time for emails or through a lot of times social media. So if you have questions or concerns, you know, feel free to utilize as a tool, right Colleen? So, yeah.
Yep. Awesome, awesome. The, now, just for, I, I just want to know, when do you have these meetings? You know, how do we, I'll just, let's start that off. That's, I think that's real important at the beginning of our podcast. When are your meetings? And how often do you?
I can, I could take that one and maybe Ross and I can just talk a little bit about what the school committee does and how people can connect. So we do have a monthly meeting for the full committee and we meet on the second Monday of every month. Most often that's the case. Sometimes there's a Monday holiday that will bump it. So I think our next meeting is April 11. Those are at six o'clock at Keith Middle School in the community room and they're open to the public. So people can either show up and you can even sign up and participate in public comment. You can watch the videos. They're all recorded. There are minutes. So they're really great ways for people to engage both actively by coming or passively by keeping up with the videos.
And it's important Charlie and, and, and I mean, Colleen can reiterate, this is why we ran. A lot of it is dry. A lot of it can be very mundane and procedural. I think Colleen and myself, Melissa, everybody on board. I think we're trying to make it more transformational. I think we're trying to find ways that we can really be part of the, the solution and being part of the whole process. But it's important that parents and families, even though the meetings are dry, to, you know, to, to, to keep an eye on things because there are important decisions that are made there, you know? And, and you want to get to know the people who you voted for and put there, you know, and you want to hold us accountable, you know? So being part of it and showing up to, to a meeting and saying your concerns, you know, sometimes there're going to be people who, who feel strongly one way and other people who feel strongly another way. But if, if we're not hearing things, if we're not being a part of the process, then what we believe in and what we value doesn't, doesn't translate into everything. And Colleen can get into a little bit more detail. So what, so if you, you have a concern and you want to bring it to the school committee and the mayor's attention, then you can actually sign up to go and, and speak in front of the, and speak in front of the committee and the mayor and, and address your concerns. So Colleen, can you kind of like get maybe a little bit more detail on what that process is like for parents and family members who want to express concerns?
Yeah, sure. So one way, as Ross said, is you can come to a meeting, you show up a little bit early and fill in a form that just says who you are and we will make sure you're on the agenda to speak. That's also really intimidating. That's not necessarily the, the best way even to move something forward. And say, if you've got an issue, if you're struggling to navigate something as a parent, as a student, as a community member, reach out to the school committee and you don't necessarily have to email all of us at once. If you know one of us, great. If you just feel like you want to blast the whole committee, that's fine too. But let us know your concerns and our job is to make sure to field them to the best person. Usually what we say, and I actually got a text today from someone with a concern about MCAS. And I said, step one, go to your child's principal because they know what goes on in the building and they're responsible for your child's experience. So we try and direct people to the quickest and best pathway. But if you don't get what you need, then you come to us and then we can help elevate your request, make sure the superintendent knows about it. That's our job and our job is to look out for the students. So we do that however we can.
Yes. And Colleen, that's important. And in terms of what our job is as school committee member is, we, we want to hear concerns. And we want to be able to give you an honest answer. And we do work closely with the superintendent. We do work closely with the mayor. And we work with some really, really good colleagues who bring a lot to the table from, from different walks of life, different experiences. So utilize us as a tool. That, that's what we're there for, you know what I'm saying? So, and speaking a little bit about school committee, Colleen, maybe we can even talk a little bit about it because prior to me like really running, I didn't know too much. I mean, so the school committee is composed of six individuals, six individuals for four-year terms, alright? So every three year, I'm sorry, every two years, three candidates, it's almost like a rotational cycle would run. So there's, there'll always be three people who have that experience with sitting and then the opportunity for a new candidate to run and for those who are up for reelection to, to, to reestablish their voice in the community and their ideas and stuff, you know? So that's how it works. It's, 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 there's six of us there, they're four-year terms. And like I, I encourage people, you know what I'm saying? Because it's easy to get on Facebook and, and, and to, and to just vent your, your anger and frustration. But it's important to get involved, be part of the solution, you know? And I think that's probably why Colleen ran. That's what I, that's why I ran. It's easy just to like complain about the schools are doing, schools are doing that. The city's doing, the city's doing that. If we have those concerns, you know, take that step and be willing to, to, to get into a position where you might be able to influence some, some things and change some things, you know?
True. Yeah. I just comment on the bottom. It says the April and May meetings will be held at the high school, April school choice and May is the budget, public hearings, it's majority, it's a recording.
Oh, that's my, that's my.
Good looking at Marjorie.
How we doing with Fernandez?
Nice, nice.
And maybe that's a, a good segue to talk about what is the school committee's job? So primarily, we oversee the budget and we oversee the superintendent. And if you're familiar with the nonprofit board of directors, it's sort of similar. It's the idea that there is a group of people, in our case, elected by our community to make sure that the schools are running in a way that reflects the needs and the opportunities of our place. And we do that by hiring a superintendent. So about three years ago, we had a hiring process that brought on Mr. Thomas Anderson, who's been leading our district. We do his evaluations and provide him feedback. And that's our main point of contact as a school committee. We're not out there emailing teachers, talking to guidance counselors. Our job is to direct and advise and give feedback on the superintendent. And the other piece is the budget. So we're the stewards of the money and it's a significant amount of money. It's, now I'm going to miss the number, Ross. I have to pull up my notes. But we will be in the 200 millions for our budget next year. I think right now I want to say it's 192 million, but let's maybe I'll try and look that up during this meeting. It's a lot of money and it's the seven of us, the six elected people plus the mayor who's elected and serves by his role. And we're deciding where that money goes and we're, we have oversight. And if something goes wrong with the money, it's on us. And if we're missing opportunities, it's on us. So to Marjorie's point, we have a, a budget hearing and people have an opportunity to figure out how we're using the money. And I think that money is kind of boring if you're looking at spreadsheets, but it really reflects what our priorities are. So if you're looking at how we're spending our money, it shows you what we care about as a school district. And there are some opportunities and Ross and I will talk about those later that we're really excited to be spending our money on.
Yeah. And again, and.
One second Ross, before you, where the videos of the school committee, where are they shown? Is it just cable access?
Yeah.
Yeah. The best place to go is the cable access website. And then they post all of those videos of the meetings.
Alright. Excuse me. I'm sorry Ross, go ahead.
Yeah, no, that, that's, no, that's perfectly fine. And I'm just, again, you know, I, I can't hammer home enough the importance of, you know, we were talking about what the committee looks like, some of the, the work that we do. And watching those videos, I, I just, I, I have to continue to reiterate that Colleen just went over, you know, the budget. There's, there's monies out there, you know what I'm saying? And the school committee helps shape how that money is spent. So as a parent, as a guardian, it's important for you to be aware of what school committee is doing and share those things because there might be an idea that, 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 that comes into somebody's mind that the superintendent hears or, you know, like the, a school committee member takes into consideration, wow, that's not a bad idea, you know, maybe we can work this or we can add this on to this vision, you know? So like I said, the resources are out there and it's kind of, you know, it's the school and collaboration, I, you know, with the community and school committee members to make sure that it is being spent right, you know? And, and it's going to the right places to your students. So again, that goes back and I'm, I'll probably say some million one times. It's the importance of being involved. It's the importance of being aware. So show up to those meetings or watch the videos, shoot Colleen an email, myself an email and say, this is what I'd like to see. This is what I think we're missing. And as, you know, we don't have a magic wand to take, to just make it happen. But those things will be considered. There'll be addressed. Your voice matters.
Yeah, it's very, you know, it could be a very trying times, you know, when you're reviewing a budget. And then later on, you do that budget and then you have to amend something at some point, you know, take from one to put to the other, you know, it's adjustments. But, you know, good people that are behind the table and listening to different, different things, essential things in the school district like you two and, and many others. I, I think that when you're doing those amendments, it's for the betterment of the school district. And so keep up the good work.
Thank you. And that kind of segues into, you know, talking about the budget stuff. You know, I think it's important because I didn't, again, you know, Colleen and I were talking about our presentation today. We want, we want to present things in a way that people who have no understanding about things so that they know what we're doing. And so we figured we'd just briefly go over some of the committees that we have. And, you know, a brief overview of what we do. And maybe Colleen can talk a little bit more about some of the committee before we, before myself and Melissa came on. But right now we have an academic achievement committee, governance and policy and finance and operations. So there's three committees that we sit on and those kind of, those committees reflect the basic needs of, of, of what we should have in a school. Again, we're talking about academic achievement, working to, to monitor and make sure that our students are staying, having their needs met to learn the best that they can, best practices, resources in the classroom. Governance and policy committee members, governance and policy is looking at the overall picture and how things are, are, are running, you know, policies and, and procedures in our buildings. And Colleen, you know, you get into it more because you know more than I do. Then finance and operations and that gets into the budget type of stuff. So those are the three committees that we have. And Colleen was there prior to me and she's here now. So maybe, you know, Colleen, if you could share a little bit about what things were going on or how things were then and, and the differences now and some of the little changes that we're seeing.
Yeah. And I'll even talk about our process. What was pretty cool about this, how we changed some of our committees is that at the end of 2021 in December, I think it was, Josh Ammaral, the outgoing school committee and I got together with Ross and Melissa on Zoom like we're doing now. And we just had a conversation about, you know, this is our experience, this is what to look for. And then we got chatting about, why do we do things this way? And let's think about, are there ways we can do things better? And that's what's great about having new people on the school committee is just asking those questions and, and pushing us to think differently. So as a result of that conversation, we pushed for a governance committee and governance is sort of a boring word, but it just really means leading ourselves, right? And we need to think about, as a school committee, we represent what's possible in our community. We need the best, the brightest and the people who really are truly dedicated to the mission of supporting our kids. So let's hold ourselves accountable. Let's set some goals for what that means. And that's what we're going to do. And I are on that committee along with Chris Cotter. So we'll be doing that along with a policy piece. And the policy piece is just as important because policies involve masks. But even last year, we made a recess policy where every elementary student is guaranteed at least 20 minutes of recess. That's the kind of thing that the school committee can take on. A school committee doesn't always choose to do it, but we want to choose to do it and stretch ourselves.
Yeah. Good. And, and the governance and policy that, that, that committee is, it's important because, again, in my short-term, short time there Charlie and Colleen, you know, it's, it's only been a short amount, what I've, I've learned about the superintendent is he has an outstanding vision. He's a thoughtful man. He, he cares about, about the students. I think he, he, he has values that reflect the best ways to learn and he gives the openness and, and the trust within the school building to do that. He gives a lot, a lot of autonomy to each building and he does micromanage. And, you know, it's a pleasure to get to know him and work with him. And hopefully, you know, we continue to foster that relationship. At the same time, we also want to make sure that we have the right leadership in the buildings. And I, and I'll talk very frank about that. You know, people and I had worked in the schools for, for 17 years. And the school principal shapes the environment and culture of that building. There are tons and tons of expectations that come down to a building, you know, constant, constant test, constant assessments, teachers constantly being observed, evaluated. There's a lot, there's a lot of pieces. Very often, we don't have enough teachers in the building. So, you know, if teachers given a prep time, there's a lot. So it's important for the leadership in our buildings, our principals to reflect the values that Mr. Anderson has, that I know he promotes and the needs of that community. And there are some principals doing an outstanding job. You know, I was, you know, Carter Brooks, just they, they showed outstanding growth, you know, they, they, in, in their ELA and math scores. I mean, and this is a school that, you know, they, they serve a relatively urban community, you know? So you're seeing these incredible things going on in our buildings. But that's because you have an outstanding principal. And you can have a principal who also can, can have an agenda that doesn't reflect or have a, has a approach that doesn't connect with their staff and students, you know? And that can be, that can be a major impediment to how the building is, is how a building operates, it, it impacts the teacher's morale and, and sense of commitment to the building. It, it, it shapes the energy. So we want to make sure that, you know, that we're working closely to have the right people in our buildings, Charlie, and having those conversations with the superintendent, listening to parents.
I'd say good leaders. This comment here says, community, community members can go to the New Bedford Public Schools website and click on our community, our schools and click on school committee on the left-hand side to view recorded meetings, agendas, meeting minutes and see committee members' contact information, which is very important. And I'm going to leave that comment up for a few seconds. It's in the comments section. It's in the comments section. So the, but that's real important. You know, we can't assume that everyone knows what, what you all are doing.
Yeah.
What, whatever, we can't assume that we all know where the school committee meetings are.
That's right. That's right.
And this, this is what I like about the podcast. And one second Ross.
Yep.
Colleen, do you, you know, being a veteran now in your, in your, in your position and you're, I know you as an open person and willing to speak to anybody and also being on it, does you still have that same role? Do you still keep your personality when you're conducting that role as a school committee member? Where you're so open and welcome to people, you know, when, like you already said it, you already touched on it with you and Josh and Ross and Melissa meeting, you know, and that's, that's very good. Sometimes there's people in certain positions that are open to newcomers. And I'm glad that you did that, you know?
Yeah.
Thanks Charlie.
And I want to thank her and Josh.
I do want to do that too. For me, as I said, you know, school committee, it's, it's a slog. As Ross said, we're meeting, we're on subcommittees, we're on monthly meetings. It's something that gives me energy when we've got new colleagues and we have new opportunities, but it's not something I want to do forever. So this is even to me, an opportunity for me and Ross to invite people. Let us know if you think you might want to run for school committee because I would love to, you know, four years from now, recruit my successor and help somebody else run because, you know, I know how to make the system work for my kids at this point. And I'm glad to have an opportunity to help the system work for everybody's kids, but other people need that opportunity too. So this is my invitation that, you know, in two years, there'll be an election for three of the seats and we need fresh faces. We need more parents involved. We need more from our communities of color. So reach out if you want to start just learning about what do we do? What does it take? And how can we support you thinking about that journey?
Okay. Yes. And, you know, it's, it's nice that you're encouraging people and, and it's just, I just want everyone to understand that when it comes to running for politics, you know, you got to be ready for it. You got to be committed to it. Don't play games with it. It's very, very important. It's very essential to our community, essential to our country. And, you know, so, you know, take it serious. Don't just play games with it and, and it's, you know, it's your name, it's your family name. It's the name that your, your mom and dad gave you, you know? So you're putting that name on a ballot to be elected. So make, just show some pride in that, you know, and take it all seriously.
And, and, and just to piggyback on that too, you know, we, and we talked about all the time is, you know, we have to take into consideration that, you know, people literally gave their lives for us to vote, you know, I mean, outside of the local politics, national politics. People were thinking of this moment right now, when they were given their lives of being incarcerated to, for us to vote. You know what I'm saying? Like, you know, they were thinking about us, you know, at this very moment, you know what I'm saying? So I, I think it's important, if nothing else, to, to respect that. And, and going to the point, a lot of people say it doesn't make a difference. And I understand that when you're talking nationally, but locally it does make a difference. You know, literally, you know, each and every vote matters. And when people of like minds vote together and have like a block, you know, city officials, city administrators recognize that block. And then if that block has ideas, then people are going to listen to that because these people voted for something or an idea that other people are going to have to take notice of, you know what I'm saying? Or they're going to put an individual in who other city officials will be like, all right, we have to take notice of it. They're sending a message. So your voting does matter, you know? And again, you know, not to get my soapbox, but I think we all agree, the importance of being part of the process, you know?
True. Yeah, yeah. True. The, I remember Colleen when she first started and she was walking around our neighborhood. And, 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 oh, and it looked so great, you know, it was her and her family. And I said, cool, you know, high five, you know, that's awesome. And it's, so she hit the pavement, you know, put her sneakers on and she was ready, you know? And why not start exactly at your doorstep and work around from there and just move and move until you get out to the other outskirts? And so, and then Ross, you did the same thing, you know, you know, both of you were organic about your, your committee, your campaign and, and, and look what happened. Look at the results. You're here in those seats, doing your job.
And, and, and that's the exciting thing Charlie is, you know, you walk into this and, you know, you're, you're going from campaign mode, which can be very, very intense. And then all of a sudden you're in governance mode and you're sitting down and you're learning, you know? But that's why it's important, you know, Colleen and Josh reached out to Melissa and myself, you know what I'm saying? To kind of let us know, you know, some of, some of things to be expected and just creating a comfort level, you know what I'm saying? Because there, there's a massive, massive learning curve and we're still, you know, I'm still taking all of this, I'm still taking all this stuff in. The most important thing is recognizing and respecting the individuals on the committee. Cause there's a wealth of information and, and a wealth of knowledge within the six people there. Colleen, maybe we can just, you know, we have Mr. Jack Livermento, wonderful man, a staple of the Cape Verdean community from our old lady, the assumption community. We have Mr. Chris Carter, you know, a police officer, a straight-up guy with, with incredible knowledge and incredible sense of commitment to the city. And Colleen, you, you know, we have, if you want to talk about some of the other ones, just so I'm not all, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So Olivera, he has taught me so much about the finance and operations aspect. And, you know, New Bedford was not always in great shape financially as a school district, but we have a terrific CFO, Andrew O'Leary, who is someone that community would be really satisfied to know. He's looking at our numbers, but that wasn't always the case. We didn't always have our house in order. And so the finance and governance committee is poring over those numbers every month. And Bruce is just such an expert on that. And also an expert on thinking about our facilities and our spaces. One of the opportunities that I think Ross and I want to talk about is something called ESSER. It's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Act that is giving New Bedford Public Schools, I think it's just over $70 million right now. And we have an opportunity to take care of some of our spaces that we've just been sort of fixing up as problems become big to ignore. So Andrew and Bruce have really been thinking about, how do we get ahead of things so that we're not fixing things up, but we're improving our spaces? And, and outdoor spaces are something I'm really excited about too. How do we create outdoor learning environments so that our kids can get out of the classroom? And never mind during a pandemic, even just the fact that being outside, breathing fresh air, stretching your legs during the school day just does wonders for kids.
Yeah. That's, um, see, I was, I experienced that in middle school in LA County, you know, I was born and raised. I mean, I was born here in New Bedford, then we went to LA. And there's one thing that we were able to do is go outside and learn, you know, and where you're, you're, you, you have your English class out there, you have science out there, history, everything's out there. And you wasn't, you know, it wasn't an uncomfortable feeling. It was a good feeling. Class went by pretty quickly.
And then we have Melissa Costa too. Melissa, you know, she 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 all vote in with me, and um. You know, you talk about vibrancy and energy, I believe she's the first Latina to uh be elected to the Bedford School Committee. Um, you know, so we we just have, we just have a real vibrant, real diverse. Uh, group of people who 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 care about the city, and that's exactly why we get paid so much, right, Colleen? You know, that's why we get the big bucks, you know, the bucks. But we know, we have, we have a really, really good group of people, and again, you know, you utilize us as a resource, you know?
I like this comment about uh, says Colleen has been an awesome addition to the committee. I love her outlook and support for our students. She has the best interests of them in mind as well as not being afraid to question or express her opinion.
You know, I do wanna say, here I am inviting people to run, but the thing I also wanna point out is do it for the right reasons, and. Excited about Ross and Melissa especially because you know they're here for our number one constituent, which is the children, and. The hardest thing about schools, I mean, we were all kids in school, and we know that you don't feel like you have a voice when you're a student, so. Many members, we might hear more from parents, we might hear more from teachers because they're adults with email accounts, but. You know, for us, it's really about what is the best thing for our kids, and if we can't ask those questions, then we shouldn't be here.
And uh go- going to uh, you know, some some of the monies that the school has and, um, you know, Colleen, we maybe we can talk a little bit about some of the. Uh, you know, there there's some new positions that are coming out, and again, I, we can't go too much in deep because still kinda like in that. Development stage, we put a vote on the other day, but it's gonna be growing, and I'm sure it'll be tweaked or whatever. But there were two new positions that the school committee voted upon, and um, you know, we have uh an out-of-school time manager. And, you know, Colleen, you you can uh jump in and because you you probably got it more than I do.
I feel really friendly about this, so I'm happy to talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah.
It's actually posted, so I noticed if you go on School Spring, it's the website where most school jobs are listed, so. This out-of-school time manager job is something that I, as a parent, and I have a kindergartner and then a three-year-old. So a a future public school student, and one thing I was actually pretty struck by, being a school committee for four years, I knew a lot about the system. But becoming a parent of a kindergartner, I saw things don't work quite the way I expected them to. And, you know, one of the first things, I was having conversations with parents, and. There was a mom who's a teacher, and she said, how do I drop my kid off before school? School starts after my school day starts, and do we have any before-school programs? And I had reached out to the superintendent, and there there are very few um in our school district, so. The superintendent and his team really recognized, you know what, we need to better meet the needs of our working parents. And the school day is really short. When my neighbors drop off my son at, you know, he gets home at two thirty, three o'clock, I'm like, what are you doing here already? You know, there should be ideally stay after school for an hour, have an opportunity to do some enrichment, and that's what this position is designed to do, is to think about. How do we give our kids more opportunities for enrichment, but also how do we support our working parents? Which overwhelmingly, New Bedford parents are working parents, so we need support taking care of our kids. Um, my son said the other day, he said, well, why does school have different hours than when parents work? And, you know, bingo, right? Why have we not had that system where. We know we can't expect teachers to meet the needs of our kids for more hours, but we can create new opportunities with the programs and resources we have, so. Folks should check out that website and look at that position. I think it'll really be a game changer for parents and kids.
And and then the other one that we vote on too.
Go ahead, I'm I'm just trying to copy the website so I can add it to uh, add it to the screen for us.
Great, thanks.
Go ahead, Ross.
Yeah, and the other position that we were talking about, we vote on is the college college um and career information manager. Which is really, really good because there was just, you know, the there was a whole, um. You know, the the citywide conversation about having innovative child school, why a lot of people, um, you know, why some of the people are advocating for it. Was because of um, you know, some of the college readiness and and the um, the credits, you know, so. I think it's important that people understand that um the district was listening to that. And we're we're trying to create means that we have people in place to help students. Um, you know, prepare for college or just for career readiness, and again, Colleen's far more articulate than I can. But maybe you could talk a little bit about, um, you know, our our new position that the College and Career Information Manager, you know?
Yeah, and that was just posted too, so as Ross said, the school committee approved it because. Even though I said most of our job is overseeing the superintendent, policy and budget, we also do approve new positions, so. Folks should know that when they're concerned about seeing new positions added, we're approving those and making sure that we can afford them and they make sense for our kids. And in this case, you know, we heard actually from our student representative, we have a student representative. Cynthia Torres was with us, and she said, you know, I need this. This is a position that I wish existed. Years ago because she's first-generation college student. Her parents don't necessarily have the experience, and, you know, I think even, I was in college a long time ago now, my experience isn't relevant. So we need to get somebody who is an expert on the FAFSA, which is how to apply for financial aid. And also get kids to start thinking about college before it's too late to make your best decision. So that you know what classes you have to take and how your grades are lining up. Um, let's get kids on college campuses and middle school so they feel excited and see that college is a pathway for them. So folks should check out that position too. It's, I think, again, going to be a really val- real value add.
In 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 the school committee, we there there was a real, real, um, I thought there was a great dialogue, uh, a great conversation about. That position and the potential for it to grow. The mayor was saying that we could even see more people, uh, more than just one. A person being hired in the long run, you know, except the importance of of having that conduit between high school. Um, and and what comes after that, and then, you know, the other possibility is that person. Um, working with our students and keeping an eye on them as they go through the college experience so that they might, uh, you know, consider coming back, you know, that's how things were. When I was in school, people kept an eye on me, and it's like, hey, you know, Ross, come back to the city, you know? Because we wanna bring people back into our our city, you know, people who are graduating from high school, we wanna see um a diverse staff, we wanna see diverse administration. And we want our people who who grew up in our city to come back, so. Uh, one of the ideas that came up during that conversation about the position was, um, you know, you know, just having an eye to to help students. Uh, explore options for college, financial aid piece, and for career readiness, and then even, you know, monitor them. As they move on and maybe coming back and and contributing to our city and school, so there there's just a lot of exciting stuff going on right now, you know?
You know, just uh, you know, with the diversity of uh, of the school committee, I just uh. You know, what you guys should do is like a potluck dinner, you know, just to. Could you imagine that that counter, you know, you guys would have. Tremendous amount of food. All parts of the world, it would be real, real nice, and um. So, but that's, you know, just to uh, the um. I I think that um, you know, it's. It's so important to to keep adding those different titles, you know, just like you just talked about in in. Um, but you also gotta pay attention of people being overwhelmed. You know, and uh, and then that's when you kinda add to it, because just at your level where you're at. Um, there's a lot of things that are put on your table, you know, and that you have to take care of, and that goes for everybody within the school district. I never had such an appreciation.
Guys, one second.
I never had an appreciation for uh the school department until I worked there as a school resource officer. And I really understood and I really got a a hold of what a teacher goes through, you know, from. In the classroom to speaking to parents, to speaking to students, and um, so. You know, I I I just, I just want, I'd I'd like people that are at the administration level just to maintain and 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 uh. Keep an eye on different positions because people do get overwhelmed, especially when they're taking money from you guys all the time.
And 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 again, that 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 goes to the importance of, um. You know, it's talking about like overwhelmed and 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 workload, it's it's important that. Uh, you know, that that teachers and builders know that they have people in in their corner, you know what I'm saying? I mean, um. Because our educators, our teachers, our frontline people do, uh, people don't know what. It it entails to be to be a teacher, it's a twenty-four-seven job. Um, and it's important that they know that they have school committee members who have their best interests in mind. And again, that's why Colleen's on the on the show right now, that's why I'm on the show, and we're encouraging our school committee to make sure that they. That people know that we're we're there to advocate and and push for them. Um, our our primary role isn't just being here for teachers, for the students, but my philosophy has always been that. Um, the better a a a teacher feels, the the uh, uh, more they feel supported, the more they feel invested in. It translates into the classroom. Um, if a teacher feels alone or isolated, or they feel they're being attacked, or they feel like their voice doesn't matter. Um, that also comes into the classroom, you know, so, uh, we we wanna continue to be uh visible, we want people to come to me. We want people to have conversations with us, and to let them know that you have elected officials. Um, who who have the best interest of their of their health in mind too. Um, it's it's a very, very timing job, it's a very exhausting job.
And you know what, there's a there's a lack of understanding of um the separation between. City emissi- city admini- um administration and school department, it's two separate things. And they always think it tend to to put them all together, and you gotta realize that it isn't, it's it's it's. It's all administrated by different people, different, different title structures and and and. They don't have, they have a a a lack of understanding for that, and it's good that the mayor's there as a chairman because now. You know, he can see both sides and and be part of it, and that was the way, I mean, structured by the forefathers a long time ago. That's the way they did it, they had a bigger, bigger focus. We can hear you, Ross.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Looks like an uh.
Yeah, he's in a. Would we know what we could do? We can talk about him right now. You got these secrets, you'll never hear it till later.
Gotta tell by your mouth, but. Yeah, and I'll say, Charlie, you know, I think this is where one opportunity for us as a city is to think about the city charter. And the city charter is basically just a document that says how we're organized as a city, so, you know, we could rethink. Things like how the school committee is structured, who is the chair, how many seats there are. Um, other communities are actually looking at doing a ward-based school committee because, you know, as Ross can tell you. It's really hard, and you know, Charlie, it's really hard to election citywide, so, you know, city councilors can run based on a ward. That means it's your neighborhood, you've only got so many miles to walk, um, these are questions we could be asking. We could say, why not have ward-based school committee seats? Or what would it take to make sure that our Central and South American community is represented on the school committee? Because, you know, Melissa is the first person, uh, the first Latina from uh on the school committee. But we've got a really big community that's underrepresented, and people who don't speak English, whose kids are in our school. Maybe aren't getting the best services, but if we don't have them represented, we don't know.
True, the uh, growing up, the bilingual program um was so huge in the city, um. Um, especially in the South End, and um, you know, I I know that things have been. You know, not funded, yeah, well, you know, it's. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to call him, uh, well. I'll text him and see if I can help him out. It's probably a volume, Russ.
Yeah, you know what I can say on that point, Charlie, is we actually have a really great dual-language program now at Gomes. And that's a program where kids start in kindergarten and they're learning English and Spanish during the day. And the reason we didn't have this for so long is, once upon a time, Massachusetts had a law that said you couldn't teach bilingual education. And if people researched that, it ends up being one of the most terrible things that could have happened uh to our immigrant community, and thankfully, it's not in place anymore. And for us, I mean, we would love to see um more bilingual programs. One of the challenges is finding teachers. Who are being bilingual and can teach in those programs, but this could be a huge opportunity and growth area. And a way to attract people to New Bedford Public Schools to say, your kid can come out of school being a fluent Spanish speaker if they're native English. And for kids who come in Spanish-speaking, it's a great opportunity for them to see their classmates. Learn to speak their language and not always feel like the kid who's behind and struggling to keep up.
So true.
We can hear you, can you hear us?
Can hear you.
Probably you can't hear us, okay.
Yeah, just test your volume, Ross, on your phone and and that's probably the problem. Or, I don't know, if the volume on your headphones might be turned down. The uh, this commentator says, community members can send comments to the committee at. Publiccomments@newbedfordschools.org. Comments will be forwarded directly to the committee members.
That might be Marjorie again, so if that's Marjorie, you or whoever that is, thank you. Um, and I'll say that may be a a safe way to get in touch with us too, because it is, it's stressful to come, show up. And and even you need childcare and you have to sit through a meeting. Um, and I'll say at least I pride myself on responding to emails that I get, so if you email me and don't hear back, you should nudge me again. And expect a personal response.
Good, good.
And I'm seeing a question about expanding the dual-language program, so Last Day New, and this is something Ross and I can ask about um as well. But Last Day New, the biggest issue was just having the teachers who can teach the dual language, so right now it's still only at Gomes. Um, but there's an option too, which I learned when I registered my son for kindergarten, which is. Even if you don't live in the Gomes School District, you can put your child on the waitlist, um, and there can be opportunities to get in.
Yeah, and a good leader will uh find ways to get it expanded, um, just by. You know, there's so many, so many between grants, and there's just so many things out there, you just gotta be proactive, you know? And Ross talked about that earlier, you know, offline at, you know, just being proactive as a school committee member. As a principal, as a teacher, you know, um, don't put everything on the administration to take care of everything. You know, be a be an active participant in in the district that you work for. And just go out and try to find something, you know, and it it may be something that, you know, where a grant writer sits down with everybody and says, hey. This is what we need, this is what, let's apply for it, and they do it anyways, I I'm I'm saying this. I know New Bedford does that because they're so active with a lot of things, and there's never enough money, you know? Every billionaire says, I want more money, so, let's, you gotta, there's never enough money.
Oh, I think, Ross, I think you're back, we can hear you.
I can just see your lips moving, so I'm just letting Colleen carry the show, I'm not sure what happened.
Can you take your buds out, maybe, and disconnect?
Yeah, disconnect your. Take these out, just unplug them. And.
Restarted, I need to restart my phone, so. But, um, maybe I should just say some closing thoughts, and then I'll let Colleen carry, uh, if she don't mind carrying the rest on. Uh, Charlie, one more time, I wanted to thank you for having me.
Got about twelve minutes.
Technical difficulties, but, um, no, I appreciate, again, Charlie, I appreciate the platform that you've given us, I appreciate. Um, you know, giving a voice to to the average, everyday person, and um, you know, we wanna encourage people, you know, get involved, show up to school committee meetings. Um, contact Colleen, contact myself, or the other committee members. Um, and I know the last piece that you asked, Charlie, is who I'd like to nominate to be uh on the show for next time. I'd like to go with Chris Carter from the school committee, I think he'd be great, he's a very stand-up guy. Uh, he's very, very knowledgeable, uh, very, very passionate. So, but again, Charlie, thank you very much, and Colleen, thank you for being here with me, and uh for for getting my feet where in this whole process.
Chris is a dear friend of mine, yeah.
I know Ross can't hear us, but it's great to be serving alongside him.
Awesome, um, Colleen, I have a question for you, and uh, who would you like to see on the Really Charlie Podcast?
Yeah, so, you know, already Ross has extended the invite to other school committee members, so I think that would be terrific. Um, there could maybe be even ways to investigate some of the programs, so I saw a question about dual language that. There could be New Bedford Public School staff who might wanna come and talk about their programs. And then another space that I'm really interested in is just, you know, beyond school committee, but the city has this ARPA money. The American Rescue Plan Act, um, millions of dollars, once again, that are dedicated toward our community. And there is an opportunity right now, the city council is talking about it, um, I'd love to have that conversation continue, what are we spending our money on? I, as a school committee member, just joined the Board of PACE, which is our local um. Community Action Agency that supports families with pool assistance and um childcare and you name it. PACE has a really cool housing strategy that they're proposing, and Josh Amaral, our former colleague on the school committee, is leading some of that work. So I'd encourage you to have Josh come and talk about that housing strategy as well.
I uh, I like when Josh is on the podcast, I, he's one of my favorite guests, and um, I would gladly do that. Um, and everything that you said, I will reach out to. I would, I I follow up with everything that my guests have have asked me to, and I try to get. I would, I, I follow up with everything that my guests have, have asked me to and I try to get a, a yes or no by um, whoever I have to. And if they can't come on, I understand it, but I'll find the information out anyways. And then I'll, I'll, I'll actually broadcast it on the, on the podcast. So that's a great idea by both of you. And um, you know, let's, let's continue to do this. And it may not be all the time that, you know, Colleen you're on or Ross is on, but you know what, I, I invite this to to all the committee members. Um, and uh, you know, it'd be great to have the mayor on there too, you know, and um, to add his, his input, um, because you know, I, I, I give him a five stars for things that he's done with this pandemic. And um, and along with the superintendent, tremendous, tremendous job. And um, I, I uh, you know, it's a tough, tough, tough thing to do and um, they did it. So um, so next month we'll do this again. I really, really appreciate this. Um, this will be on YouTube, um, Facebook, LinkedIn, uh, Spotify and Anchor. So you know, if you're driving around tomorrow and you want to put it on, on your Spotify account, you can just punch in Really Charlie and this, this will come on. Which I love listening to the podcast the day after. It, it, it just, it's nice. Um, and not that I'm not paying attention, but you pay attention a little bit better the second time around. Catch some things, just like watching a movie. You know, you see the movie and then you watch the second time, you say, how did I miss that? You know, so.
Right. Well, Charlie, could I say just a couple of things that I want to
Sure.
People, um, so again, if people think, hey, someday I might want to be on school committee, send me an email and my email is cducky@newbedfordschools.org and also Marjorie had shared the link. Um, and this is something that, you know, I want to just help people better understand what we do and what the role is. So I invite people to that. The other thing that I'm personally talking about a lot with others in the community, and I'll shout out my neighbor, uh, Avon Drayton, who's talked about this with me as well.
Nice.
There's conversations about how do we get more kids in New Bedford to learn to swim? And right now we're about to invest about a million dollars in our pool at the high school. And I think what a great opportunity to think about how the public school pool can be available to more people. Um, if people are interested in that question, it's something that I'm personally pretty passionate about. So I would want people to reach out to me if that's something you're thinking about too.
Yeah, Coach Pont at Staying, he was instrumental and actually was at New Bedford for a little bit. Um, he was unbelievable and um, you know, uh, I had, I would love that idea. That would be awesome. Awesome, awesome, you know? Um, the way we learned, I learned how to swim is uh, my dad threw me in a creek, you know? And uh, that, that's not, that's not good. So you know, it'd be nice to have some good, good um, instructors to teach some kids how to swim. Um, especially uh, the dangers of neighborhood pools and beaches and everything. We definitely need to have them up to par when it comes to swimming, but great idea. Give uh, give your neighbor a high five for me. So I really, I support that a hundred percent. A hundred percent. Um, because actually I almost died of a drowning, so that's very um, personal to me. So um, I would have never been here uh, if it wasn't for the uh, speedy uh, quick thinking of a, a man and he saved my life. So, but uh, swimming is very important. How you swim is, is, it's crucial. So um, Ross, I know you're out there is, and I want to say happy birthday to Maria Grace, his mom, you know, her birthday was yesterday. And uh, she's twenty-one years old with a forty something year old son. I don't get it, you know, she's so young and vibrant, you know? And uh, you know, she's a, a pillar of this community and uh, happy birthday, Mrs. Grace. Colleen, please give your husband a high five for me. Um, I really appreciate you guys and um, let's do this again.
Sounds great. Thanks so much for having me and thanks Ross for bringing me along.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. I really appreciate it. Um, eventually Charlie, I'm going to be on the show. We're not going to have one tech problem. Um, again, Colleen, thank you for carrying it on. And again, Charlie, one more time, thanks for giving us the platform. Um, and, and again, being a voice for our community, Charlie. Um, again, you're not just giving us a voice, but you're a voice too. And um,
Thank you.
So we're going to keep on working together, best we can, learning and again, be involved, parents, contact us, show up to meetings and be part of your child's educational process. And thank you so much, guys.
All right. And you guys, listen, anytime, I don't care who it is, if you recommend a guest to me, please just get in touch with me. You know, you have my phone, call me. Say, hey, Charlie, you know, I want someone on the Really Charlie, I want someone on the Really Charlie Podcast. It could be young or old, you know, or in between. It doesn't matter who they are. I always want to put someone on air and it could be a neighborhood baseball coach. You know, anybody, if you want them on there, just let me know and I'll, I'll try to get them on there. All right.
Great. Thanks, Charlie. Have a great night.
You also. Good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Good night.
All right. Good night. Very, very good people on the New Bedford School Committee. I really, really am proud of this school committee and what they're doing. And uh, they all have titles that are well deserved and uh, hopefully we can keep up this uh, keep up the good work and, and support them and anything that they're trying to do because they have the best interests of our school district. Um, and there's a comment here, um, good evening, gentlemen and Mrs. Duicki. Yes, good evening. Thank you for that comment. Thank you for everyone for listening. Um, I want to give a shout out to Marjorie for actually putting some facts in the comment section and to go to websites for us and uh, that we can uh, go to those like websites like School Spring and and the school committee uh, agenda and all that. So great, great job. Um, and tomorrow I'll be back on here with the group called True. It's uh, two women musicians, um, they're, they're really doing a great job in the community. Booking gigs all over the place. They were on the Paul Santos uh, live podcast um, not too long ago. And uh, I'm going to bring them to the Really Charlie Podcast where we get to learn these uh, fabulous musicians right here in our, our backyard. All right. Thank you, thank you. I'll see you tomorrow at the same time, seven PM Eastern Time. And uh, I'll also be on, on Friday with uh, Coach M100, which is Marvin Speller. And we'll be trying to talk to people about mental health and, and putting mental health as your priority. And on Saturday I'll be on the Rush Show. And he'll, he's has me on there with one of his guests, which is Janet Costa. Um, I'm forgetting her married name. I'm sorry, sorry, but we will be talking about her new book. All right, everyone, as I always love to do is highlight, you give people flowers while they're standing. And I'm ready to give anyone you wish their flowers, you know? We got to appreciate who we are. Life is precious. God bless. And I will end this podcast with the sounds of Lionel Peter Walker. With this fabulous intro.